Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for August 5th, 2021. Ask the Secretary, please call a row.
President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sulick.
Here.
Mayor DeGea, present.
President.
Ms. Dumas.
Present.
Mr. Joyce.
Here.
Our ally. We have court.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see. Let's have the approval of the minutes from our July 15, 2021, meeting.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Oh, second now.
Second by Mr. Sulick. Is there a question? There is no question. The minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Now ask the CEO if anyone has signed up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on a specific topic.
They have not, Mr. President.
Thank you. Then we'll have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have one active case among district employees. This brings us to 92 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic and includes 91 folks who are recovered and have returned to work. We have two employees with COVID-like symptoms who are awaiting their test results. As you know, we are now fully reconstituted across the district and have kept in place our vaccination leave policies as well as several other policies to ensure that symptomatic folks stay home and that we encourage vaccination. In accordance with the CDC guidance, as well as the county's advisory, beginning Monday, August 9th, we will reimpose the indoor face covering requirements for all employees. Is my mic dead? Am I good? Okay. It's so weird to have an actual microphone. We will reimpose the face covering requirements for all employees and visitors regardless of their vaccination status at all district facilities, and folks can find more information on that on our Intranet. Begin, uh, July 26 through the 29th, the Ohio Water Environment Association and the Ohio section of the American Water Works Association held their annual conference, and district employees received many awards at that conference, and I wanted to highlight those for you. And it really shows that throughout this whole pandemic, the good work of the district has continued. So several sewer district employees and facilities were recognized, and I'll just run through that, and, uh, and we can recognize folks as we go. So Easterly Superintendent Bob Bonnet was presented with the 2021 WEF William D. Hatfield Award. The Hatfield Award is presented to operators of wastewater treatment plants for outstanding performance and professionalism. And then Bob's plant, the Easterly Wastewater Treatment Plant, was presented with the 2021 WEF George W. Burke Award as well. The Burke Award is presented to a municipality or industrial wastewater facility for an active and effective safety program. So congratulations, Bob, to you and your team. And then in addition to Bob, Superintendent of Environmental Services Scott Broski was a, uh, was presented with the 2021 OWEA FH Warring Award. And the, the Warring Award is presented to an individual who has demonstrated a significant contribution to the field of industrial waste treatment through administration, operation, research, development, or treatment. And as we all know, Scott is a recognized leader in the field of industrial pretreatment, and we very much appreciate him for his work. So congratulations, Scott. And then Nivea Torres. Where's Nivea? Hi, Nivea. Supervising chemist in analytical services was inducted into OWEA's Crystal Crucible Society in recognition of her more than 10 years of experience in the lab and contribution to the laboratory field. Nivea oversees a team of seven chemists and analysts and performs a range of chemical and physical tests at the district. She also actively promotes the district's work and works to ensure that safety is at the forefront of the lab. So thank you, Nivea. And as if that was not all, also in July, the district's facilities were again recognized with the National Association of Clean Water Agency's Peak Performance Awards. So the Peak Performance Awards annually recognize facilities for MPDES permit compliance. And this year, Westerly received the Silver Peak Performance Award, and Easterly and Southerly received the Gold Peak Performance Awards. And Southerly and Westerly were also recognized at OWEA with safety certificates. So in addition to Bob from Easterly, Travis Pitts has joined us, the Westerly Assistant Superintendent, and Terry Robinson, Southerly Superintendent. So congratulations to all of you. I did want Frank Foley to just briefly explain what MPDES permit compliance means at the district because it's quite an amazing feat. So go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Colin. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As you know, um, the clean water that we discharge from our plants or our effluent is monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Each of our plants has a, a permit that we must comply with, and over the course of 2020, uh, we had approximately 4,750 permit compliance points, moments in time when we compared what was coming out of our plant to the permit. Throughout 2020, uh, we had one permit exceedance. Uh, it was for oil and grease at Westerly in a grab sample. What that means is that 99.98% of the time, approximately, we were in compliance with our permits. Our plants at the district routinely earn these not peak performance awards. These folks make it look easy, but it's really no small feat. And so I just want to take a moment to congratulate, uh, the O&amp;M staff and thank, uh, the hard workers in both O&amp;M, and then all the people throughout the district who support them so that we can get our work done and have these good results.
Thank you, Frank. So, President Brown, we'd love to take a photo, uh, with you and the award winners. John, do you want to do that?
That's why you got him.
Now?
That's right. Let's go ahead. Let's do that. You guys want to come up? Travis, Bob, Terry, Scott, and Nivea.
Want to memorialize it.
Do you need help, John?
I thought I heard your name.
He can read.
Gonzalez.
Right here? Place this, place this.
He'd be good at a wedding.
Gather round.
We should.
Choreographer.
Well, we're going to photobomb this. Thanks for letting me know. I was right on the corner. Checking my phone. Now I'm back in.
Oh, that's great.
Take off your mask, Sharon.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, President Brown. And just two more things before I conclude. I did want to turn to, can you play to update you on our recent bond refinancing? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. Um, as you may recall, at our June 17th meeting, uh, you gave us authorization to move forward with a bond advance refunding of our 2021 transaction that refunded some of our outstanding 2013 and 2014 bonds. Um, I'll start off my update with what did not happen. Um, as you may recall, President Brown specifically, you had a question at the time. We, um, we had requested authorization at the, um, uh, advice of our bond council to pursue a taxable or a tax-exempt transaction. Um, there was some talk at the time that tax-exempt may become an opportunity again in the future. Uh, no such legislation has passed at this point, so we did move forward with a taxable transaction. But that being said, it was still a very successful transaction. We issued about $114 million in bonds for our 2021 issue, uh, and we achieved about $9.8 million in net present value savings, but that equals about 9.7% savings, which is more than double our 4% threshold in our, um, debt policy. And that equates to about $12.9 million in gross debt service savings. So the market did move in our favor back to about where it was in February when we initiated, uh, this activity, and we were able to see pretty significant savings through this transaction. That is my update.
Very good. Great, thank you.
And finally, President Brown, as you know, we are working with Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights on the Horseshoe Lake Dam. There is a public meeting on Monday, August 9th, and I did want Frank Greenland just to give the board a quick update on that project.
Okay. Along Donbrook, there are two dams. One creates Lower Lake, a second dam creates Horseshoe Lake. We're looking at some older photos of the Horseshoe Lake spillway, and for a while now, that spillway has been exhibiting cracks, both in the, the floor, along the walls. Cracks are indicative of problems in dam structures. These dams were constructed over 150 years ago. So we'll go to the next photo. Uh, after the last big rain event we had a couple of weeks ago, uh, there was more than cracks. Now we're talking about voids. Voids appeared at the surface, and voids in dam structures are extremely risky. These are Class 1 dams, which means probable loss of life if we lose the dam. So the risk is, is severe. So Shaker Heights officials mobilized, the district was involved, to do some investigations to determine the extent of the voids and what steps need to be taken to mitigate risk. And that work is ongoing, but a lot of work occurred. There are significant voids. There is a recommendation to stabilize that structure in the interim that is being reviewed both by the district and Shaker Heights officials, and a, a pretty expeditious repair will be taking place. I don't have the total cost of that repair yet and the exact methodology, but, uh, an engineering firm has been tasked with making the design so that we can quickly repair this dam and mitigate the risk, and we will be involved in this, in, in the work and in the discussion.
What is, what is the definition of quickly?
Uh, we expect, you know, I don't have the exact timeline. The design is underway. So in terms of quickly, the rain event occurred on a Saturday, I think it was. Uh, Sunday, people were out there, both district and Shaker Heights folks were out there to look at the dam as, as flows were receding. That's when the voids were discovered. Monday, I recall a discussion with Shaker Heights folks, and our own folks were reporting the voids. Um, they were advised and they knew that they needed to contact ODNR and work expeditiously to figure out what is going on. We could only see so much from the surface. We didn't know what was underneath the slab on the spillway, the true extent of the voids. So testing occurred really immediately. A firm was brought on, initial testing, some saw cuts. You can see the saw cut in the spillway, walkway, to see what's under it. You can see there's nothing under it. That's not good. And we, and the photo to the right, you can see that concrete wall that was poured. That was unbeknownst to everyone. So, so it's indicative of past repairs. We have no idea when. Um, but they got on it and, and had a contractor come out and repair, grout the voids, the most, you know, egregious voids immediately. So that works occurred. Now there is a plan, um, to deal with it a little more comprehensive in the interim. Uh, the design is, is underway. I'm not sure exactly, but I'm thinking week two to get into position to get that contractor on and, and do more, more. It's going to be a more extensive repair. We do not have the cost estimate yet. The need for this repair is to stabilize the risk because the district's recommendation, uh, coming out of the Lake Erie Tributary's master, Stormwater Master Plan is to remove this dam. And that's creating some discussion. And we're going to have more discussion on, on August 9th. We've been discussing this with the community. They've been well aware of the risk. We've reminded them of the risk throughout, and there is risk. So we want to expedite our own study, RFP, to do the pre-design work on how we're going to take the entire structure down. And we're still having the public discussion. We need to get past that, but we will be coming to you soon with, uh, a request issue in RFP for the longer-term fix. So at this point, I think we're well positioned. I applaud the Shaker Heights folks for being expeditious, uh, and we're going to keep watching this because this is a very risky issue. Uh, and I think all steps are being taken right now, and we will continue to update. I'll give you more updates, uh, as they unfold.
All right. I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair. Frank, just around there, what, what does the land look like? Is there rerouting possibilities to, you know, build another dam next to it while this is?
Well, I'll give you an appreciation of costs. It's to, uh, straight out rebuild the dam, which provides no stormwater management benefit, and we're not willing to pay for that. 20.7 million. You know, the combined Horseshoe Lake and Lower Lake solution, rebuild the dam at Lower Lake to meet current standards, take the dam down at Horseshoe to mitigate risk, is a $28.3 million endeavor, and we need to stage that. You know, our annual cash flow for construction is 20. So we have to carefully stage those two projects, and we intend to do so, but we want to get going. Uh, there is no opportu, dams and streams are not good environmentally, and when they provide no flood control benefit, you know, it's not on our radar.
So if, if I could add to that discussion, um, because it's an, it's an interesting scenario. It is in Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights physically, but it's owned by the city of Cleveland, all the land.
Right.
Uh, and so it was interesting, I think yesterday we got, uh, through our emergency operation manager, a document, uh, from ODNR for us to sign the emergency response plan, which gave me pause because if there's some type of emergency or catastrophic event, City Cleveland won't be responding. It'll be the, you know, police fire EMS from those communities.
Right.
Uh, and they made the plan. We didn't make it. So, um, we probably need to have, you know, I know to this point, the discussions have largely involved Cleveland Heights and Shaker Heights, but Cleveland's going to have to be at the table as this moves forward.
Okay. We would, I would like to see what you received because we, we are aware of the emergency action plan. We work with the communities to develop that. It needs to be finalized, and I assume this is the finalization.
It is, it is.
So I have not heard of the comments back from ODNR in terms of, you know, putting pen to paper and signing off on it.
Yeah, and then, you know, the, the last point I'll make, and we've had this discussion, um, you know, the failure of that structure, you talk about, you know, well, two things. There's property loss potentially, then loss of life. Um, but in my opinion, it's not in that immediate area. It's downstream. Well, downstream is Cleveland. So, um, again, as we're having these discussions, you know, we need to be at the table, um, to talk about, you know, the, the, what the fix becomes, and I, I do know also that there is some discussion around, uh, the bridges that are in Cleveland, those, um, very fine old architectural structures which are magnificent, but they restrict flow.
Right.
And so as a result, there has to be some design around a bypass method.
Right.
And the funding of it as well.
Right.
So, uh, 28 million is not the final cause for remediation of the, the, the challenge that comes with this, um, dam.
That's right.
Removal and improvement, so.
That's right. Uh, nothing comes cheap along Donbrook. There are other recommendations, and they are costly. And I've informed the board previously, overall, district-wide, we're over a billion dollars in stormwater recommendations to get us to very high levels of service. So we have to be very careful on how we stage those dollars and where they go. So we will, we will meet with you to, to keep you in the loop as we go forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, President Brown. That's our report.
All right. Any questions for the CEO? And then we'll go to our action items. Uh, let's start with authorization to advertise, uh, beginning with authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Virus Code Chapter 6119.10 for two-year requirement contract for fuel management monitoring services at all district facilities with an anticipated expenditure of $610,000. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Virus Code Chapter 6119.10 for a nine-month requirement contract for older control facilities, media replacement services, anticipated expenditure of $550,000. Uh, request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Virus Code Chapter 6119.10 for the district-wide HVAC equipment and systems upgrade project, anticipated expenditure of $9,800,000. Finally, request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Virus Code Chapter 6119.10 for the Pearl and Jennings Road Storage Tanks and Pump Station upgrades project, anticipated expenditure of $24,100,000.
Move to adopt 20, 225 through 228, 21.
Motion by Mr. Sulick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Uh, question, just if you could, um, 228, 21, uh, we had some discussion on it. Significant project, um, I believe it addresses another longstanding, I'll call it flood control type of project or project area. This is the Harvard Jennings Road area in particular. Not sure that it addresses all of the currents, concerns there, but it does begin to address some of the project, some of the problems that manifest itself with street flooding and flooding in businesses as a result of, um, basically the creek cresting and significant rainfall events. So historically, I mean, this, this has gone as, as long as I can remember, 20, 30 years. Uh, so it looks like we're starting to address some of the concerns, but this is not the end-all, be-all in terms of a cure. It's the beginning of the process, as I understand it.
Yes, President Brown, members of the board. It's definitely not the end-all, be-all. This project is specific to CSO control. It's control measure 23 of our consent decree. But as we advance that project, um, what we do on all our projects is to make sure whatever we do doesn't impact the existing level of service, and we also look for opportunities to improve on that level of service if they're cost-effective. But again, this is specific to CSO control, and unfortunately, this is in an area where we have historically had a lot of flooding, both from, um, the river itself overflowing its banks. This is a low-lying area. But then we also have a level of service in the sewers themselves. In a lot of areas, you're only seeing a level of service about the five-year storm before you see some surcharging. On the bright side of things, very limited, um, homes or anything like that in the sewer have some businesses. So some of the things that we've identified on this project is the possibility of working with those, um, property owners if there's an interest in installing backflow preventers. Again, there's a maintenance aspect to that that they would have to explore and take on, but I know Frank and his team and the stormwater master planning efforts that are going on are looking closely at this area as well.
So we did study this area under the Kioga North Stormwater Master Plan. It's a very complex area. I mean, the, the reality is, it is at the downstream portion of a watershed that has an extremely high percent impervious number. So there is a extreme generation of flows during wet weather. We're in a very low spot, Harvard Jennings, and then Big Creek discharges to the Kioga River, which is a very large river that also exhibits its own fluctuation. And sometimes during the biggest events, you know, the stream wants to come out, the river doesn't want to let it come out, and things start to back up. I mean, the door is slammed. I mean, that's the reality of life. Same things happen with storm sewers that are coming towards the bottom of certain streams in high flows, so it's a tough, tough issue. We do have recommendations. They are in excess of 100 million. Uh, we are going to take that recommendation and put it into advanced planning to, to determine what can we do and how can we stage it where and when. So there are recommendations. There's a railroad culvert, as you know, that also can create a restriction in the larger flows. It's not an easy fix. It's not an easy fix, but we will program this into our advanced planning to see how we could stage certain elements and keep things going moving forward.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll look forward to that. I, I know that when we started this, uh, conversation, uh, years ago, both of us were young men, so.
And we were meeting at a bar with angry folks.
Angry folks, that's right. So, all right, uh, no further questions, then without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 225 through 228 dash 21.
All right, thank you. Let's go to authorization to purchase. Just authorization to purchase an annual software license, maintenance, and support services renewed. Carisoft Technology Corp. for our district's, what is it? Bomby Cloud Software for term beginning July 17, 2021 through July 16, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $52,049.76.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Is there a question? No question, then without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 229 dash 21.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to enter into contract, starting with, uh, let's see, request for authorization to enter into a three-year requirement contract with the A.J. Gates Company for lift equipment, for the maintenance and repair services at all district facilities in an amount not to exceed $110,322.52. Let's see. Request for authorization entering to a contract of Trillium Pumps USA, Inc. to purchase two boiler feed water pumps for the Southerly Wastewater Treatment Center to be installed under the Southerly Boiler Feed Water Pumps Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $242,998. And then finally, a request for authorization entering to a construction contract with Tucson, Inc. for Rocky River Stream Stabilization Sewer Protection and North Roach and Project in an amount not to exceed $711,535.
Motion to adopt 230 through 232 dash 21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulick. Is there a question? There's no question without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 230 through 232 dash 21.
Let's go to authorization of contract modification. Uh, this is authorizing final adjusting change order for contract number 20005318 with Great Lakes Construction Company for stream bank stabilization along Chippewa Creek at Chippewa Creek Condominians Project by decreasing the contract amount by $189,993.92, thereby bringing total contract amount to $1,092,019.58. Also request for authorizing final adjustment change order for contract number 20005885 with Mara Services, Inc. for Easterly Outfall Sewer Repairs Project by decreasing the contract amount by $54,092.50, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $258,817.50.
Move to adopt 233 and 234 dash 21.
Motion by Ms. Dumas.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Is there a question? There's no question without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 230 through 232 dash 21.
Let's go to authorization of contract modification. Uh, this is authorizing final adjusting change order for contract number 20005318 with Great Lakes Construction Company for stream bank stabilization along Chippewa Creek at Chippewa Creek Condominians Project by decreasing the contract amount by $189,993.92, thereby bringing total contract amount to $1,092,019.58. Also request for authorizing final adjustment change order for contract number 20005885 with Mara Services, Inc. for Easterly Outfall Sewer Repairs Project by decreasing the contract amount by $54,932.50, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $258,817.50.
Move to adopt 233 and 234 dash 21.
Motion by Ms. Dumas.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Is there a question? There's no question without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 233 and 234 dash 21.
Okay, let's go authorization to amend agreement, uh, starting with request for authorization to amend professional service agreement number 17001763, Department of the Army for the Euclid Creek Spillway feasibility study for additional resources necessary to complete the study and increasing the agreement amount by $25,000, thereby bringing the total agreement amount not to exceed $191,250. Uh, request for authorization to amend the 2020 Green Infrastructure Grant Agreement number 19002107 with University Circle Incorporated, UCI, for the Cozad Bates House Green Infrastructure Project by including additional work scope necessary for fabrication and installation of educational signage and increasing the agreement amount by $1,296, thereby bringing the total agreement amount not to exceed $205,503.
Move to adopt 235 through 232.
Infrastructure Grant Agreement number 19002107 with University Circle Incorporated, UCI, for the Cozad Bates House Green Infrastructure Project by including additional work scope necessary for fabrication and installation of educational signage and increasing the agreement amount by $1,296, thereby bringing the total agreement amount not to exceed $205,503.
Move to adopt 235 through 237, 21.
Motion by Mr. Solik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Is there a question? There's no question. Without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 235 through 237 dash 21.
Okay. Let's see what I'm going to do here. Property-related transactions. So I'm going to take the first two separately. I'll try that. Let's start with request for authorization entering to a license agreement, City of Cleveland, temporary use of property known as Permanent Parcel Number 02322002 located on West 143rd Street in the City of Cleveland, owned by the City of Cleveland, necessary for construction of debris racks and access road improvements at various locations, project with a total consideration of $1. I'll take that one separately, please.
Move to adopt 238, 21.
Motion by Mr. Solik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Question? No question. I ask for a roll call.
Mr. Solik?
Yes.
Mayor DeGater, yes. Mayor Bachi?
Yes.
Ms. Dumas?
Abstain.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
President Brown?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next one, let's go, was it 239, 21, authorization entering to a license agreement, City of Cleveland, temporary use of property known as Permanent Parcel Number 13219036 located 4201 East 64th Street in the City of Cleveland, owned by the City of Cleveland, necessary for construction of Morgana Burke Systems Improvement Project. Total consideration of $1.
Move to adopt 239, 21.
Motion by Mr. Solik.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? No question. I'll ask for another roll call, please.
Mayor DeGater, yes. Mayor Bachi?
Yes.
Ms. Dumas?
Abstain.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
President Brown?
Abstain.
Mr. Solik?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, and I'll take the remaining. Looks like I have three. Yep, three. All right, so let's go, starting with our request for authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement, one temporary easement, property known as Permanent Parcel Number 58121014 located at 8666 Broadview Road, City of Broadview Heights, owned by VP Partners LLC, necessary for construction, maintenance of Chippewa Creek Stream Stabilization near Broadview Road Project, and to enter into a subordination of mortgage with New York Community Bank. Consideration $1,200 to New York Community Bank for subordination of mortgages, $2,000 to Cullen and Dyckman LLP for professional services related to subordination. Total consideration $3,200. Request for authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement, one temporary easement at property known as Permanent Parcel Number 5812102 located at 8183 Twin Oaks Drive in the City of Broadview Heights, owned by Stephen C. Hardwick, necessary for construction and maintenance of the Chippewa Creek Stream Stabilization near Broadview Road Project. Total consideration $1,000. And finally, request for authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 58107008 located at 8252 Briarwood Drive, City of Broadview Heights, owned by Stephen E. Liptak, successor trustee of Liptak Family Revocable Trust, necessary for construction and maintenance of Chippewa Creek Flood Reduction Project near Echo Lane, with total consideration of $26,050.
Move to adopt 240 through 242, 21.
Motion by Mr. Solik.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question? No question?
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Just on Resolution Number 241 dash 21, that's the one that we replaced. We had an address error on that, and the address is not 8183 Twin Oaks Drive. It is on, it is at Broadview Road instead.
What is the address?
I'm sorry. It's on 241, and the address that was read in the old agenda said 8183 Twin Oaks Drive. And that was an error. The correct address is just Broadview Road. There was a correction sent out.
Okay, okay.
Do you have that?
Yeah, I have it. Yeah, as amended. Okay.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay. Thank you. Other question? Comment? All right, so no other question or comment? As amended, they are approved.
Resolutions 240 through 242 dash 21.
Thank you. Okay. Almost got there. All right, authorization to grant credit. This is authorizing district to issue credit adjustment, total amount $41,762.53 against sewer charges on an NERSD account ending in 0002 for Cleveland Boat Club at 1180 Main Avenue, Cleveland. Let's see, a request authorizing the district to issue a credit adjustment, total amount of $66,989 against sewer charges on the NERSD account ending in 3919 for Marie Maseria at 2108 Taylor Road, Cleveland Heights. Request authorizing district to issue a credit adjustment total amount $396,416.83 against sewer charges in NERSD account ending in 0991 for Save-A-Lot at 2227 Noble Road, Cleveland Heights. And then finally, request authorizing district to issue a credit adjustment amount of $29,419 against sewer charges on the NERSD account ending in 0000 for Kevin Wiley at 18680 Parkland Drive, Shaker Heights.
Move resolutions 243 through 246, 21, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Is there a question on the motion?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Can we've been issuing these sizable credits for about a year now. Has this been pretty much getting cleaned up on errors and that now?
Mr. Solik, I believe these four are a result of a backlog from COVID times. Essentially, WQIS has been able to catch up on activity where they weren't able to go out on site and investigate some of these issues. These are all specifically, I believe, leaks of various flavors that the outlet meter leaks and various leaks that did not return to the sewer system or are not the customer's fault. So they aren't necessarily errors, but it is a catch-up of some outstanding issues.
Thank you.
All right. No other question? Without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 243 through 246 dash 21.
Thank you very much. That does conclude our action items. We have two information items. First is the financial report and investment advisor's performance report for the last six months. I would suggest if there are questions, you could get them directly to Mr. Duplay and his team. Other than that, we'll go to operation and maintenance quarterly board update.
Okay. This is the ONM quarterly update for the second quarter of 2021. Follow an outline that we've been using for some time here, starting off with safety. I'll talk a little bit about effluent quality, touch on maintenance, budget performance. And then, since our major award winner Bob Bonnet is here today, we will have him give a brief spotlight presentation on the new aeration blower at the Easterly plant.
Okay.
Since the beginning of 2021, we've had 28 lost workdays, 28 restricted workdays. We're doing far better than we did a couple of years ago in 2019. Attribute this to the good work of our staff in ONM and safety group stressing safety with our staff on a daily basis. Still, I won't be satisfied until I see zeros on here, so there's always more work to do, but doing much better. Of the events that resulted in lost or restricted time, there were three. Two of those were strains. One was an arc flash event at Westerly. And then this table shows a little bit more detail about those. So two of the events were at Westerly. One was the arc flash. One was an event that happened when a ladder kicked out from an employee. And then we had a strain, I believe it was a back strain at SSMO while someone was loading a vehicle. The DART rate is the number of incidents per 100 full-time employees that results in lost or restricted days. The bars on the left show the last few years where we've been. We're currently at 0.77 for the DART rate. We have an internal rate of 2.0. On the right are some bars to compare our internal rate to other industrial comparisons. So we have national, we have public utilities, we have water and wastewater industries across the country. And in Ohio, that 2019 data is the most recent data available.
Pretty good.
Are there any questions about safety? If not, I'll move on to effluent quality. The suspended solids are one of the main parameters that we look at in our effluents all the time. As you can see, all three plants are in the single digits for concentrations of total suspended solids in our effluents. You can also see that we have two different limits. One limit at the plants that discharge at Lake Erie, a lower limit at Southerly, which discharges to the Cuyahoga River. And that's a theme that you'll see throughout the slides. Another of those parameters is CBOD or carbonaceous biochemical oxygen demand. Again, below the limits at all the plants for the quarter. Looking at Southerly, you can see that we have different limits in the summertime. We have a more stringent limit that kicks in in May and will last through October, but we're still meeting that limit. Phosphorus is similar, where we, again, are below limits at all three plants for the last three months. And then finally, during the recreation season, which begins in May, we have effluent limits for E. coli bacteria. The monthly geometric mean limit is shown there. And again, we're below the limit at all three plants. Moving on to maintenance, dry weather overflows within the collection system for the year. We're at four so far for the first six months of the year. During 2020, we had 11, so that compares fairly well. Those dry weather overflows were caused by three different categories: debris, downstream blockages, and damaged force main at one of our pump stations. We also look at the performance of our automated equipment in the collection system during wet weather. Almost 100%. For the first six months of the year, we had one hiccup in April where we had a pump that was blocked at one of our pump stations, but generally doing well with wet weather performance. We also look at planned maintenance in our facilities. We do not have a KPI for this, but generally are in the 70% to 80% range for planned maintenance, which is what we like to see. We don't want to have too low of a percentage for planned maintenance. That would indicate that we're reacting more than we're planning. So this is what we typically see. And then moving on to the budget. For the 10 budget centers in the operation and maintenance department, our operating budget for 2021 is approximately $62 million. Halfway through the year, we've spent about $27 million. The variance for our expenses comes down to about four categories or accounts. One is electricity, another is salaries and wages, contractual services, and then chemicals make up about 80% of that variance. And just to see our spending from last year, spent a total of almost $57 million. And at this point last year, we'd actually spent about $500,000 more than we've spent through the first two quarters. So I'd be happy to take any questions. If there aren't any, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Any questions, Mr. Folden?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Frank.
Oh, go ahead.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to go through a few slides for information on our new aeration blower, which was purchased under contract 1540 and is now installed at the Easterly Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Okay.
So what you see here is this aerial photo of the Easterly plants, 105 acres. Our average daily flow is about 80 million gallons per day, and we have a wet weather capacity of 400 million gallons per day, thanks to the Easterly Secondary System Improvements Project, which was part of the consent decree, which was completed in 2017. So you can see that's what's outlined in the blue is the blower building. And that's where the, our existing blowers and where the new blower now is housed. The airflow from the blower building comes down and heads to the north, and you can see the lake there in the lower right, and goes underground and then supplies air to the activated sludge process, which is our secondary treatment part of our process. Of course, all the plants have preliminary, primary, and secondary treatment. In Easterly, we use activated sludge. So what's highlighted in green there are the eight aeration tanks. And the aeration blowers are important because they provide the air for the aeration tanks. They also supply air to the channels that supply the settled sewage going into the aeration tanks and mixed liquor coming out of the aeration tanks and going into those circular tanks, which are the final settling tanks. So if we take a closer look at one of the aeration tank passes, you can see that the surface of the aeration tank has that agitation, which is air that has been pumped in from the aeration blower through aeration diffusers. And part of this contract replaces the aeration diffusers for better efficiency in these aeration tanks. There's about 5,200 aeration diffusers per tank. There are four passes in each one of these aeration tanks, so the flow comes into pass one and then circles through pass two, three, and out pass four. It gives lots of contact time. We have a target dissolved oxygen, or DO, of 2 milligrams per liter. And the air requirements are not only for mixing and keeping the solids in suspension, but also to, like Frank was talking about, one of our NPDES permit parameters, CBOD removal, which is the soluble organic material, which is being removed by the activated sludge. This is a photo of our existing aeration blowers. They were installed in 1936. They're multi-stage centrifugal blowers. There are two that have a rated capacity of 25,000 standard cubic feet per minute with 1,500 horsepower motors, and three that were rated at 40,000 SCFM, and they have 2,000 horsepower motors. We've done some studies with consultants over the years. The large 40,000 SCFM blowers have shown some inefficiencies and wear. And the smaller blowers are doing a little bit better because the records indicate that during the history of the operation of these blowers, the plant was operating primarily the larger size blowers. And then if they needed to supplement the air, like for instance, in the summer months, when the wastewater temperature is warmer and it's harder to hold the dissolved oxygen in the wastewater, they would supplement with the operation of a smaller blower. Our current operation is we run only one of those blowers. We will run a 40,000 SCFM blower in the summertime, and in the winter, we run a 25,000 SCFM blower. The bullet at the bottom really tells the picture here and why we needed to upgrade the blowers in addition to their age. We really have coarse control of the inlet airflow for the butterfly valves, which are from the inlet, when installed in 1936. So we can't really throttle down these multi-stage centrifugal blowers very well. In fact, to keep them operating efficiently, we really need to put the flow through them as they were designed. What happens is then we tend to over-aerate at the aeration tanks, and we have an opportunity of possibly having some loss of revenue if we could, or cost, if we could get those trimmed back. So let's take a look now. Here's a construction photo of our new aeration blower. It's a Houghton blower. It's been installed. It's operating right now. It's a contract 1540, like I mentioned. Now, this is not the first Houghton blower installation at the district. Southerly, I understand, has three Houghton blowers and their first-stage aeration. Those are a little bit smaller. Those blowers, about 15,000 standard cubic feet per minute. Our Houghton blower has a maximum capacity of 30,000 standard cubic feet per minute. And you can see that range there. And you can see that range there, because the beauty of these new smart blowers are the airflow is adjustable on the inlet, and also air can be adjusted in the air that goes into the individual aeration tank passes. We can set this blower up for DO control, and to maintain that 2 milligrams per liter dissolved oxygen concentration in each of the aeration tank passes that are in service, the blower will modulate itself, cut back on the current draw, and there could be a savings of electricity. Anticipated electrical savings is about $50,000 to $100,000 per year. And you can see this is the last photo of it. Shows our control panel, shows our operating interface terminal, and you can see the blower there, which is in line with the other existing five blowers. And now, it's, like I had mentioned, it's in operation.
Very good.
Any questions?
Excellent.
No questions?
Very good.
Thank you. Progress. All right, that takes care of our information items. I'm going to move to open session. Anything for the good of the order? I'll move then to public session. Anyone sign up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on any subject matter?
They have not, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, and we have no matter for executive session today?
That is correct, Mr. President.
And we have completed our agenda for the day, and I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
And I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.